Is, is, we, I know Steve's not coming, is Luke coming? Oh, Luke is here, okay.
He's there, but we'll, uh, I know he's trying to, so he's, they had him finishing up a couple of houses today, so. Were ya? Yeah, five o'clock gets to be a tough one. Alright, well, let's call this meeting to order for a budget work session of the City of Iscany City Council, and if we can all rise for the pledge allegiance. Alright, during the roll call, we have everyone present except Councilman Lundin, who did notify us of his absence. Do we have any public comment? Hearing done, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Collison, I believe was first, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero. Moving on to our business with Finance Director Betker.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to preface the slideshow and the discussion is, um, goal here, this is not a normal time for a budget work session, normally do that, um, you know, July, August timeframe. Goal here is to make sure we get, one, some basic baseline understanding, right, we've got, um, we've got at least a couple of new members here, this would be the first budget, second, make sure we got that, that base, understanding. Second thing I want to make sure we get to is, um, to affirm the goals of the council. It's really difficult if I get most of the way through the budget cycle and then find out that the goals are not what I had understood them to be, right, so make sure we get that clear. Um, and then the third thing that we'd want to make sure we have a clear understanding of before we leave, and we could use the whole two hours if we want or not, either way is fine. Uh, the third thing would be is to make sure we understand the budget process approach, right? This is going to be whether we're going to stick to what we've been doing with, with, uh, budget work sessions, um, or do we want to have more work sessions, how do we want those structured, that, that type of, that type of stuff? So we'll start going through these and some of these questions will present themselves as we go. So, Josie, can I have a, since I can't take this off, can I have one I can hold?
One to you, a clipper?
Yeah, if we have a clipper, that would actually be really helpful. Alright, so, what was that, so it sounded good enough for, if I talk? Let's go. Alright, so we'll, maybe I'll just hold it. Alright, so this is, um, annual budget timeline, uh, this year is a little bit different, um, we got our, uh, our audit was one week later than normal. Um, audit presentation, one meeting, uh, later than normal, that's happening tonight, but would normally be at the second meeting in April. Um, so some of this has gotten pushed a little bit, um, but this is how it would, would gen- would generally be working out. Um, this year is a little bit different, you'll see that alternate timeline, yeah, in your packet here tonight. Yeah, I suppose actually it's probably worth mentioning while we have this up here, uh, remember that when we get to that September meeting where we approve the preliminary budget and the preliminary levy, ultimately, all you're doing is approving a levy which you will not go over. The levy that you approve in September can go down, but it cannot go up, so. So, what are the goals? Past council's goals, uh, what I've been working on for, you know, say, the last four years, is the presumption that the budget that I present should consider these things as the priority. Uh, a steady declining tax rate, um, and we've talked, uh, very often about avoiding double-digit increases or decreases. Um, and also the, the caveat reminder that tax rates will not always go down, there will be years when tax rates have to go up. That will happen eventually, you run it out far enough, that's always an inevitability. Second goal, uh, levy debt-free, um, this was something I noticed when I got here in 2017. Um, I'd come from a city that issued bonds every single year and sometimes multiple times per year. I think any city can go levy debt-free, uh, but some have a very short, clear path to that. Uh, others, like where I came from, I think it, I could get it done there, but I think I would need a timeline of eighty years. Eighty years is tough. Here, I, the timeline is considerably easier, right, it was clear back in 2017 that 2030 was a legitimately doable goal and we are still on track for that. Third goal has been, uh, fund balance policy, this is something that we modified after I arrived here. Uh, when I got here, the fund balance policy basically said, uh, general fund fund balance should be fifty percent, and if it is ever more than fifty percent, um, it should be used to lower the next year's taxes. That statement in and of itself is actually a little problematic because you, by the time you know you have that excess fund balance, you're already past, right? It's a lagging indicator, so it's always actually the next budget cycle would generally be when you would actually have that available. So what we've done is we've modified that since I've been here, um, to now say that we want to have a range from thirty percent to seventy percent. And the thought there is, is that during the good years, we should be socking away extra money, so that when we do have bad years, market value goes down, and we actually need to provide genuine tax relief to residents that genuinely needed at that moment in time, we have fund balance to be able to help do that. So that's the goal, good years, sock money away, and those really bad years, that's the rainy day fund that you pull from. This, this, how do we achieve those goals? All three of those goals is nothing other than planning, 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 planning. That might be anticlimactic, um, but that's it. The goal every time I present a budget is to be able to prove that the levy that we set is the correct levy, that there is a demonstrably provable answer, that this is the correct number, and that should be, that should be communicated. Some of the things that I go over, this is not an all-inclusive list, but at the same time, I didn't want to, I don't want to go too deep in the weeds maybe. Some of the things that I'm thinking about when, um, putting together a budget, um, and considering these three goals that have been the, the stated goals of the council in the past. I should understand that a steady declining tax rate. Tax rate, the math is a little more complex than what you see up there, but tax rate is basically the levy divided by market value. You know, we have to get into things like, um, you know, various exclusions like green acres and, uh, homestead value exclusion, um, you end up with, uh, something called adjusted tax capacity, things like that, but in its most simple terms, tax rate is levy divided by market value, and then that's important. Okay, so then we got a tax rate, so what do you do with that, right? That's where this next part here, whoops. This is property value times the tax rate equals taxes paid. Alright, so anybody can understand, if you understand the tax rate and you understand what did or did not happen to your property value, you can figure out what your taxes that you're actually going to pay are at the city level. It's also important to think about when we're, when we're, when I'm, when I'm going through, how am I going to meet these goals? Of a steady declining tax rate, in this case, um, it is important to recognize that past rates impact future rates. This is simply the correlation that what you did well in the past is a benefit in the future, what you did poorly in the past is a cost to you now. You don't make any decisions in any given budget, you're without impacts, good or bad, on a future budget. Another consideration, this goes toward another one of these goals, is fund balance is insurance. It's not insurance that you purchase, um, but having fund balance is insurance, it mitigates risk. It is easier to keep a steady declining tax rate when you have adequate fund balance. If you have little, no fund balance, that's a considerably more difficult task, um, and that's just, just how it is.
Mike, if I could ask you a question there, so, when we're looking at that fund balance and we, you know, we, it was fifty percent that they wanted, you know, that was the, the ordinance or the statute, I guess, city-wise that we had.
Yeah, that would have been policy, yep.
We had to change, I think, shortly after I came on because it had been drained down from the, the previous year or whatever. You know, when you're looking at that, I mean, that's all just city regulations that are put on itself, right, because, I mean, if you really have that thirty percent there, I mean, if, if everything is going horribly bad, I mean, you could potentially dip it below that thirty percent too, right, I mean, you just would have to change your, your own rules on it, right?
Yeah, and, and, and our-
Because otherwise, what's the point of saving the thirty percent if you can never actually use it, you know what I mean, it's a mistake you can't touch, which it really is, right?
Well, so you, so you do always want to maintain some minimum level, right, so there is always the catastrophic events that you can't foresee, um, that you do want to have some minimum balance there.
But I mean, in that catastrophic event, you could use it, right, I mean, it's, it's not like you can't ever touch it if it's-
Yeah, and that's the point, that's, that's the point of making sure that you always have some minimum level, is that the acknowledgement that I might actually need this in a catastrophic situation and it needs to be available. Having fund balance at two percent is, that's a recipe for issuing tax anticipation notes. That is expensive and a very difficult hole to climb out of, there are a handful of cities that have gotten into that boat, and once you're in that boat, short of asking a lot of residents and business owners to pay a lot in taxes, there is not another way out of that boat. Once you get into that cycle of tax anticipation notes, issuing those, you start doing that twice every year ahead of your, prior to your next settlement, and there's, there's no easy, pain-free way out of that, it's going to hurt. So, yeah, you do want to always maintain something, but, yeah, it could be used, and, and that would be the time when you'd want to be using that now.
I mean, I'm not advocating for ever using it, if, you know, but I mean, I'm just, just so you guys are kind of aware too, I mean, it's, it's something that you could touch if you absolutely had to, right?
Yeah, the, when I drafted that policy, the idea between using, um, thirty and seventy percent on that, um, was the idea that once you get to seventy percent, you have already now gotten enough to be able to provide some really significant tax relief for at least two budget cycles, just on that alone. Um, and if you need to, if need be, you could, you could provide some pretty significant relief for three budget cycles. I think the odds of us needing to go beyond three budget cycles, if we get to a situation where we need to provide significant relief, paid for through fund balance for more than three budget cycles, I suspect we have a whole lot of other much, much more serious problems. Um, and I don't think at that point anybody's really going to spend a lot of time talking about fund balance. We're talking about economic catastrophe, even during the great reset, uh, great recession, um, really, I had fundamentally, really, only had two budget cycles that were really significantly impacted. And that was a particularly serious economic downturn, and it still only resulted in really negative impacts on two cycles.
We got hit hard.
Yep, there were a lot of cities, especially those that had, um, had a higher percent of their market value in residential, they got, they got hit hard. You know, some other, um, St. Michael was another one, that got hit really bad, um, a lot of vacant homes. We had a neighborhood stabilization program here to help out on that, but other cities did or did not make use of that, and some of them, yeah, it was a tough go for a while, absolutely. And I will go into a little more detail on all of these, but for right now, this is just the planning considerations, kind of some of the, some of the things that roll around in my mind as we're going through the budget process. Levy debt-free, the primary on that is plan everything, right? If you go through the capital improvement plan that I have put together, um, you'll see, we got everything from replacing windows to roofs to tuck pointing brickwork to doors to interior paint to exterior paint to flooring. Most of those, if you were looking in the Excel document, have, um, notes within those cells, um, showing what the base rate was, um, you know, I've already projected, uh, you know, carpeting at a certain, a certain amount per square foot, I've already actually estimated, we've already actually measured out how many square feet of flooring we have, all those types of things. According to that plan, we want to make sure that's as precise as possible. It's also important to know that on a capital improvement plan that presents twenty years and goes out forty, it is important to remember the goal is not to be perfect, that's not going to happen. The goal is to make sure that you're playing the correct game and you're in the correct ballpark. What I've told the council in the past, Dan, you probably remember hearing this more than once, if we get to the end of twenty years and I'm off a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I can fix that. If we get to the end of twenty years and we're off fourteen million, I do not have a fix for that. We've got to make sure we're playing the correct game, um, so. Identify expenditures, we just talked about that, right, you got to, you got to, you got a point for everything, if it's something that has to be done, it should be on the list. And if it's not on the list, there should be a reason that it's included in the operating budget instead. And, uh, if anybody's ever looking at the capital improvement plan and you think that there is something missing, and by God, there must, there must be something that is missing. The example I've used in the past is, you know, I've always told the council when we ruled this out that it was never really particularly good until the third iteration. And what generally had happened in my, in past experiences of what, you know, Tiberian heads and myself will meet, we'll go over it, we'll go over it, we'll go over it year after year after year, and then sure enough, Matt Sylvester will be driving down to the state fair, and he'll get halfway there and something will dawn on him, and he'll think, holy cow, how could I have missed that? That's got to be at least a million dollars, and that's going to happen, there's, I mean, you can't look at everything all the time and not miss something, so. If you see something that's not on there you think ought to be on there, we, we do want to know about it. Um, the other part of this is, um, for capital planning and making sure that you don't need to issue debt and you actually do have the funds available, is you have to actually identify funding. Um, this was a shortfall when I got here, we had had a plan, probably, was it in 2010? I think the plan was ordered, and I think presented maybe in 2012 for street reconstruction. It identified costs and plans and all that stuff, and that was great, except, um, it didn't identify any funding. And so that plan didn't go anywhere, and we are still, now, working through those projects that had been identified originally back in 2010 and presented to the council in 2012. We're still working through those, and, uh, and we will get there, and we will have the funding, and we will not issue debt on those.
When did you start with the city?
June sixth of 2017. Same thing here, fund balance is insurance. All these, a lot of these, uh, components mixed together and blend together in different, uh, different capacities and in different gradients. But again, this is one of those deals where having adequate fund balance after you've planned well, is how you're going, is in part how you can make up a hundred and forty thousand dollar shortfall at the end, right? I know I'm playing the right game and we're in the right ballpark, um, but you've got to be able to have, you've got to have some insurance that's on the sidelines. And in the end, this is the don't ever forget moment here, right? The reason we want to go levy debt-free is that, as, as things are currently, and Jimmy, you and I have talked about this in the past, when interest rates were really low, it was more like a quarter million for, per million. But now, at the current interest rates, if you issue a million-dollar bond, which you would never issue just a million, that would actually be a remarkably small project, but if you issue a million-dollar bond right now, you could expect, um, at the city level, it'll pay roughly four percent. Over life of that bond, you can figure out about a third of a million. And I want everybody to think and remember that once you've paid cash for three projects, you got your fourth one free. Like, and that's a big deal to be able to aggregate that over years and decades, that's a really, really, really big difference. If you can get that right, and it's hard to aggregate that and get that right over decades, ten, twenty, thirty years, because you're going to have a lot of different councils and a lot of different council members over that time. But if you can find a way to aggregate that together and keep that thing going, um, that's a really, really big deal. That's, that's, that's a lot of free projects that you don't pay in interest. Fund balance policy, um, sticking to that. I spend my time thinking about economic cycles. You know, that the average recession is, um, two quarters, six months roughly. The average, what is it, the average period of economic expansion is what, between four and six years, depending how far back in time you go. They've, they've gotten a, the, those durations have changed over the, over the decades. But you want to be thinking about that, and where do you, where do you reasonably expect that you are in the, in an economic cycle? We've had a lot of years of expansion, and, um, I think we're due for a recession. I don't know that it's going to be particularly horrible, and to the extent that it might be, it's probably going to relate to, um, commercial real estate. We're not heavily commercial, that, this time around, that plays in our favor, um, but we'll see how that goes. Also important to remember is, when you have an economic downturn, we, I've drawn this graph out before, uh, before the council, but it is important to remember that there are certain bits of information that happen in real time, and there are certain bits of information that you only find out about after the fact, right? People, when they start to struggle, lose their jobs, um, start to have a hard time making ends meet, that's a thing that you generally are finding out about in real time. Like, we, we all know real people around town, they're paying real money for real bills, and when it gets hard, it gets hard, and we know about it in real time. However, from the finance department's perspective, you might not see a drop in market values subsequent for quite some time, right? So, that lagging indicator, you've got to recognize that just because market values haven't dropped, doesn't mean that there might not be some people really struggling, but usually that's, usually that's pretty clear. Unemployment is the same thing, right, it's, uh, to the people that are struggling currently, we know that, but you're also going to see unemployment rates relatively real time. You know, you're, you're always within a month of the next, uh, unemployment report and having an understanding of that. The other part of this is, uh, restraint, restrained spending. Very, very difficult to add to fund balance and meet those objectives if, in the good times, spending is a free-for-all, that just simply can't be. If, if, if restrained spending is a good thing in a downed economy, uh, there probably is some value to that in a good economy. The exception being, of course, is you got to pay for your capital, because your capital will always need to be paid for, there's, there's no way around that. This was, this last point is a little bit of a, seems a little odd, right, to say lower taxes equals less stability. What I'm getting at, and probably too few words there, is, to the extent that one, um, values lower tax rates today, at the expense of fund balance, you are introducing instability to that, to that paradigm, right? It's never, we're setting a budget is never about just today, it is about today, but it's never just about today. And every budget has an impact on every future budget. And, um, yeah, if, if, if we decide that lower taxes is the only priority, um, it makes the other goals more difficult. So I put this, uh, in, in my December presentation, I went through it in steps, um, here I just put the whole, the whole shooting matchup. The point I want to get across here is that knowing the levy isn't enough information to know if taxes are going up or down, or by how much. I think people often make that mistake, um, one group of people that make that mistake often, that drives me absolutely bonkers while I'm driving to work in the car, is the media. It drives me bonkers. They will talk about, oh, the city of Minneapolis, their levy is going up six percent or seven percent. Well, that's great. Well, I mean, if, if, if market values in Minneapolis went up twenty percent, that means everybody actually got a tax cut. Nobody brings that up, while the levy went up six or seven percent, okay, well, if market values went down ten percent, that wasn't a moderate tax increase, that was a massive tax increase. Nobody brought that up in the news story either. And this is why I spend my time talking about tax rates, tax rates, tax rates, because if you only know the levy, you can't, you do not have enough information to know if taxes are going up or down, and you certainly don't know by how much. Tax rates, tax rates, tax rates. And this was my good example here, is the, um, city B is actually my house, um, that's in Otsego. And if you were just looking at the levy, you would think, oh, yeah, I want to live at city A. Turns out city A is Hanley Falls, town next to where I used to work in Granite Falls. Their tax rate is a little bit higher by quite a wide margin. And if you looked at the levy and you looked at the market value of your home, you would swear that taxes must be much lower in Hanley Falls. But actually, no, it's actually quite a bit higher, I mean, that's, we're talking thirty percent higher. But this is where it's important to understand is, is, tax rate provides you a lot more, a much better understanding of where you're sitting than the levy ever will. Better to always have more information, but if you're only going to pick one or the other, you should definitely be spending your time looking at tax rate, that is much more informative. Tax rate, um, this is some basic math, I've had, um, I've had some discussions with different council members about possible scenarios for future budget, right, in this case, Iscany 2024, and this would be just one example. The 2023 data here, if I can get my mouse to show up, 2023 data, this is actual data, right, actual levy, actual market value, actual tax rate, and the actual property value and taxes of our mayor. I pick, pick on him, I don't live in town, so can't pick on myself, but, so I'll pick on the mayor, that's my default. Now, if we said, alright, if we just start from the basis of, this is where we are, and we said, as a council, we said, alright, I want the actual taxes paid to go down by ten percent, right? So I'm going to input this, this value here, I'm going to say, okay, I've got an assumption about, uh, property values. Overall, market values have gone up considerably more than seven point five. We were averaging in the last twenty years about, I think it's nine point five six, yeah, nine point five six percent annually. Discount that a little bit on the single residential property, because a lot of the market value that you add is actually new homes and/or commercial, right? So if we pretend, in this scenario, we want taxes, actual, actual dollar amount paid, to go down ten percent, and that we think that the property value will go up by roughly seven and a half percent, against a total market value increase of ten percent, what you actually need to have happen is, then, you need to actually set the levy at eight percent under what it currently is. So, never mind what is or is not happening with inflation, never mind what is or is not happening with health insurance or labor contracts or gas prices or whatever, that levy would need to be set eight percent under. That then leads to, by calculating this out, that then leads to a tax rate cut of sixteen percent. That certainly can be the council's goal, that, but this is the math, right, so to have a general understanding of what it means to, to want to what actual dollars paid go down by that percentage. And to be honest, a, an eight percent reduction is only possible if, if, if you would think there's at least thirteen percent to cut. And the reason that I put those two numbers together is to be thinking that, as a general rule, you've got somewhere in the five, somewhere currently at least in the five percent inflation range, right? Between gas, professional services, employment contracts, health insurance, workers' comp, property insurance, all those types of things. I think an increase in those in aggregate of five percent would be unlikely, it's probably more than that, but if we want to view this with rose-colored glasses and, and try to give everything the benefit of the doubt, yeah, you've got to basically decide that there must be thirteen percent to cut. I think a ten percent reduction in taxes paid to be, to make the math work, really does require some pretty exceptional circumstances. A lot of it would have to do with timing, right, you would need market values to be changing at just the right time, uh, people to be at a certain place in the economic cycle at just the right time. You would need some really favorable, um, labor contracts, um, health insurance, workers' comp, property insurance. You need to have a lot of vendors in the technology and professional services arena that are not going to, um, try to up their rates four or five percent, which is not unusual. But, in this scenario, an eight percent reduction in the levy does put the debt goals and fund balance goals, um, in jeopardy. Like, that's, that's a tough, that's a tough deal. That's not to say that that can't be what the council wants to do, um, but you are introducing risk. And also remember is, you know, in this scenario, every budget affects every future budget. And to the extent that you have double-digit increases or decreases, you are likely to see the inverse in the future. If we have a double-digit increase, you probably should have a, a decrease in the future. If you have a double-digit increase in the tax rate, I've said this multiple times, I know Dan has heard me say this for years, is, if you have a double-digit increase in the tax rate, you didn't just screw up, you, you screwed up year, several years ago, that didn't, that didn't happen overnight. You, you, you didn't, we didn't get the planning right for a few years- You didn't, we didn't get the planning right for a few years, probably up to four. So remember that, the inverse, right? If you want to go down, if you want to go down 20, to go back to where you were, you go up 25, so. Where have we been? Let's see if I can zoom in on this. So you can see that on your tablets. I'm going to see if I can. Yeah, okay. There we go. Go back. So what I've got here, it's a little bit hard to see. Maybe I can, maybe I speak to it from my sheet. Basically, what we've got is, this is the actual history. We see this in the tax levy analysis that I present each year. We have this in the budget books. What you're looking at here is the kind of the condensed version of what we get in the books, but we've got market value at the top, then the change from prior, right, by percent. Then total levy here in the middle, change from prior, certified tax rate, and then the change from prior. And what I pointed out here is that these highlighted ones are significant increases or decreases, right? So taxable market value, especially after 2002, grew really rapidly. I mean, that was some really exceptional growth leading up to the Great Recession. Some really exceptional growth. I think back in 2000, I think we, I think we had 2,100 residents. We're now at 7,000, so that's pretty significant. We've also got now a correction here in 2012, after this Great Recession. A little bit here, too, we're at negative 10. We have a pretty significant decrease in that market value, right? And so that's where those lagging indicators come by. Some people are already having a hard time before we got market value numbers that actually went down. But we run that out the rest of the way. We don't see another really giant increase until we get to 2023. A lot of this was new home builds, but we had some commercial development as well. When we talk about the levy, percent change from prior, right? Again, I'm going to highlight, go through this, we're going to highlight some of these, some of these changes. Go back to 2003. That was a 36% increase in the tax rate. That is pretty significant. 17, 26, 18, 17. Some pretty significant stuff, right? We scroll through again, we kind of make this stop in the Great Recession area, and we see some decreases there in that levy. And those end up being kind of, kind of fundamental. It's sort of, you either planned and you had some fund balance or you didn't. And now you're going to pay the consequences either way. Some consequence is good, some bad, that's how it's going to be. And so there, the levy went down. Then we get back around, and we start to see some growth coming out of that Great Recession. And we see a pretty significant increase. And in 2019 here, we see that one really significant decrease. This would have been the first budget, yes, 2019 would have been the first budget that Jeff operated under, but he would not have been on council for the adoption of that budget, just to be clear about how the timing on that one.
And that was kind of passed late in December, really, where they drastically decided to make those cuts.
That was after.
Using the fund balance to do a lot of it, right?
It was, it was after, yes, we, I remember we had maybe 260, 260,000, 280, some.
Out of the fund balance, just to do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's the reason we had to change the procedure, to go from saying that we're going to hold that 50% line to we're going to go 30 to 70, and we're going to have a plan to get it back into where it needed to be. I mean, that was, that was the whole reason we had to make a change, was because of the way that that was handled at the end of Jeff's predecessor.
Yeah, if I, yeah, if I remember right, we even had a, I think we had, I think we had already approved it at the time and then came back for a second meeting, didn't we?
Yeah.
At December, yeah. As a matter of recollection.
Looking at this, it looks like it's all 10 years where in 2008, 349, market value of 2009, 2010, we had 348. So the year, if we obviously went down.
Yep.
So my question is this, is obviously we did some growth during that time, and even those numbers, they could all bring up any of the other market value. So actually, we're probably more like in the 2020, 2021, and actually look at comparable market value to 2008. Can you kind of follow me on that?
Yeah, I think the thing, the one thing you've got to remember is, is that, is a little bit of the timing and a little bit of the county's obligation on this is, so 2023, right now, the value of my home on January 2nd of 2023 is the number that will be used to calculate my taxes in 2024, right? So there's always a time difference there. So by the time we're seeing these numbers, this was already a while back, right? So you kind of get that lag in that. The other thing to remember, too, is that regardless of what is or is not built or what anybody does or does not think that it should be, anything should be worth, every assessor, whether county or city, some of the larger cities do their own assessing, you're obligated by state statute to review those on at least a fifth-year basis, and you should be hitting 90 to 105% of the actual fair market value. That's in statute. That is what they are supposed to be, to be hitting. So to the extent that, well, let's just say this. You can have, you can have a market recovery in real estate values be unequal within a city.
And that's why I'm seeing this weird swing. I don't think that 2008 obviously was a peak of the housing market. Everybody's land prices were booming, but there was a tendency that we had to have commercial, and we didn't even hit that number until 2019. So that's why I assume that recent 2021 to 2022 were actually kind of in the same position as people.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say you're wildly, I wouldn't say you're wildly off. And kind of, you know, so I, when you say that, when I think about my mind, right? Standard bar graph, and I've got this kind of going on. But you can also put a trend line on that. Yeah, I would say that we're in that ballpark, that 2021 range, in that ballpark of having gotten to that trend line again. Yeah, if I kind of evened it out and gave it one straight line, yeah, roughly.
The bubble in the housing market, it just ripple, lag for years and years, and that's what happens when there's bad financial market decisions being made, you know? And it's, I think we're going to see similar in the next handful of years, unfortunately, so.
That's what's scary about this graph is because we're just barely back at the 2008 level, really even today. And we could be.
That was one of the questions I had, too, was how do we avoid, how do we avoid having to have that big, huge 16% increase in the base, and how do we, how do we plan for that now?
I think the core fundamental difference between then and now is, is 2008, banks, a lot of banks, made a lot of money issuing non-Amy loans, right? No income, no employment. You literally didn't have to have a job or be able to prove that you had any money coming in, and they would give you a loan for 300, 400, 500, they didn't care, it didn't matter. In 12, in six months, you could turn around and sell it for a 15% profit. And the banks were perfectly happy to take their $3,500 closing fee and move on. And to the extent that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac were backed by the federal government and willing to take those securities after the fact, and as terrible as it was for the banks to engage in that behavior, I can't say that they didn't respond to the incentives before them. I mean, they did. I mean, we probably never should have set the table in that way that they had those incentives, but that's what, that's how it was. Banks today are not issuing non-Amy loans. If you have no income, no employment, you're not, you are not getting a loan. And if you don't have substantial money down, you aren't getting a loan. I think the real estate market, for residential real estate market, is considerably different one than it was then. I think, I think the pandemic has revealed some shortfalls in the commercial real estate market as a broad scope. And again, I don't think we're in nearly as bad a shape here, but broadly speaking in the US, yeah, you know, there's 30, 40% vacancy. And there's a whole lot of debt to the 2 and a 2.5 trillion that it's going to come due in not too long on those commercial properties. And there are going to be some people and some banks that are going to have to figure out how on earth they're going to handle that. Now, that's not to say that we're going to be unscathed. You cannot have that type of a disruption in the banking sector. I think that it's just right there. It's going to ripple out, but I don't think it's going to be quite, it won't be quite the same as, as what we had in 2008, 2009. When you have that many residential homes defaulting, that's a really acute impact on ordinary people. And so, I mean, we'll see how this plays out.
So as a, as a city, we almost have to kind of assume that taxable market value on homes is going to drop. So even if we keep the tax rate the same, we're going to be bringing in less money for the city. So we've got to keep that in mind. You know, in the next maybe five years, we're not going to have the, nearly the amount of money to spend. So every dollar we spend now is basically putting us in a bigger hole in the future, too, so.
Basically, I don't even want to say this. It would be drastic, it looks like, I don't know, like you're saying, just to keep the levy fair and average, so that if you actually need the lower during hard times, then it's the time to drop it. Because if you try to drop it now, like, then you start doing a little bit better than when.
Yeah, I think you have, you have to find a balance between building that fund balance, so you've got the emergency funds, and gradually lowering that tax rate if you're able to, you know, and kind of balancing those two things out, and, you know, I mean, and that's, that's really the trick, you know?
And this is where, this is, you know, that, I consider those things while I'm putting stuff together. But in the end, that is fundamentally becomes a council question. This is, Jimmy and I, you and I have talked about this before, about the wastewater treatment plant scheduled for 2040, and why I'm saying we should issue $8 million of bonds for that. Well, we want to be levy debt-free. Well, okay, that's not levy debt, that's utility revenue, that's a different deal, that's not tax-dependent. But nonetheless, why should we issue debt? Well, the philosophical reason is, is that if I'm going to save cash for an entire wastewater treatment plant ahead of time, I'm going to be asking 20 years of residents to contribute to that, some of whom will not be there when that plant is built and becomes operational. Then, if they've paid, if this 20 has paid full cash, once that plant operates, the next 40 years of residents reap all the benefits of that. They'd have to contribute nothing, and some of them will have contributed nothing, but they will benefit from that. The other option, what we've got laid out, is we're going to seek some grant funding from the state. They've got lots of it for wastewater infrastructure, water infrastructure, and then issue bonds for one-third. The idea being that if I have to cover $8 million roughly on this 20 years of residence, and another $8 million with this 20 years of residence, that's considerably more equitable and considerably more even. And it is not an entirely different premise than what we're talking about in any given budget cycle, right? It's always that balance of, everybody's got to contribute something now, but at the same time, I can't ask the people now to contribute everything either, right? It's got to be, it's got to be a balance, and every budget affects every future budget. Let's go back to.
Mike, I had a question for you on that, on that last slide there. So 2013 and 2014, the levy stayed exactly the same, right? So was that done, and that was before your time, I suppose, but I mean, do you know, I mean, did they do that intentionally to keep it exactly the same? But even though, so then somebody could go out and say, well, even though the tax rate went up, the levy stayed exactly the same, and I can campaign on that, or I can, you know what I mean? Is there a reason that that's done that way?
That's entirely possible. Here, I couldn't tell you for sure one way or the other. But also around that time, the other, the other problem that they had during that time, I think it was 20, it might have been right before that. There was something called unallotment. This is where the state took away LGA for a year, which here, if they did that this year, we'd be out roughly $1 million. That's problematic. Most cities would do one of two things. They'd either make it up with fund balance in a combination of some cuts as best they could. The other is what's called a LGA flip. And basically what you do is, you basically say, all right, the amount that I'm out, that $1 million, I'm going to only, I'm only going to attempt to absorb half of that in this budget cycle, understanding that I'm then compelled to absorb the other half in the next budget cycle. A little bit of an accounting trick, but that is what was done here as well.
That's what that was?
Yeah. I think it was a little bit before that, but I had to, you did have me stopping to think about that. I don't think it was that late, but it's been a lot of years now, so a little harder to think about that.
And I wanted to tell you guys that, you know, when you're looking at that decrease from, in 2023 of that 10%, that, I mean, that really was all from moving that $218,000 that we were going to spend in the general fund for the splash pad to not spending that out of the general fund or out of the CIP, I guess I should say, or 920 or whatever, but. And then we took, there was going to be $150,000 for the dynamic sign. We took, there was going to be 70 out of the liquor store fund, 70 out of 920, right?
Yeah, 75, 75, yeah.
75, 75, and we changed that to 10, or 5 and 5, to get potentially buy a property for it. And so that's, that's the cuts that we made. So I mean, there's, there is things like that, that it's like, well. And then we transferred that extra 70 from the liquor store to the general fund, too, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we did have.
So we had more of a transfer.
We have, what I understood at the time would be a one-time transfer increase. You know, because remember, I would, it would not be my recommendation. Council will do whatever they want, and I'll get on board because that's how that works. But it wouldn't be my recommendation to continue to increase that transfer out of the liquor fund. I think that the liquor store is doing well enough in its new location. We have every reason to believe that we'll be able to pay those bonds off early. And it would be really nice to make sure we hit the right window. Luke, you and I have talked before, they're 15-year bonds. Paying them off in year 13 or 14 doesn't really save you much money. We were literally talking about a few thousand bucks at that point. But if you pay them off at or near that first call point of seven years, that's the first time you can, you can, you can pay that off early. You can save a pretty substantial amount of money. And at the rate we're going, there's a, there's every reason to believe that's a possibility we're going to have to consider. I mean, we don't have to do it, and you can choose or whatever, but I think to have that cash there, to be able to save that interest later on down the road, it'd be super, super positive. Also remember, too, is that once that debt is gone, you immediately have $250,000 a year extra to transfer into the general fund in perpetuity. At least, right? Because I'm making a $250,000 debt service payment right now annually. Suddenly, that becomes available to go to the general fund. And to the extent that we're saving money now to pay down those bonds early, suddenly, that money becomes available for transfer. You could find, at that moment in time, it's not unreasonable to think that you could find a 10 or 15% cut in the tax rate, just like that, simply because we did some good planning along the way and ended up with a really great location for the liquor store, and it's done well. But that'd be a real benefit to keeping taxes low.
But it's not like to get that cut or to get that number, and Dan was here, obviously, so he knows what we're dealing with, but I don't know if you guys pay attention or not. But I mean, to get that, it wasn't like we said, okay, we're going to cut things that were vitally important to the operation of the city. It was just, just a little bit of this, and actually, we just kind of shifted where the money from the splash pad was, was coming from. And we, you know, decided to probably forego the, you know, the sign for now. But, you know, I mean, it doesn't take a lot to necessarily make a big difference if you're careful about how you, how you spend, so.
Yeah, and I, I think, like, all these numbers are great, but I think what it comes down to is, we as a council need to make efficient decisions with every single project, and that's where we're going to see drops in taxes but not falling behind on the fund balance if we're not wasting money on things that aren't essential or aren't efficiently planned, you know, so.
Let's see here. So this is a good one. It is super easy as staff, but also, I presume, as council. I think I've observed this over a number of years, with many different councils over the years, is super easy to forget that, you look so hard at that tree, you forget there's a forest, and to stop and say, well, I think we've done well, but like, let's look at the forest and think, like, are we doing well? And how do we objectively know, right? I mean, there's, we could touch on this in the, at the end, at the, on the last slide of my budget presentation in December every year, right? We show where is our tax rate, where some of the people, some of the other neighboring cities we're competing against. And what I always say is, we are competing against those cities, whether anybody likes it or not. That is. That is how it is. We are competing to retain, attract and retain residents and attract and retain businesses, and that is it, and we do need to win. And either we can put those numbers up on the chart, and either we're winning or we're not. That's it, it just is. So this is a good one to be able to say, give some perspective outside of just that select number that I put together each year. You know, I put together that list of like twelve of them or whatever, and we're gonna touch on that on the next slide as well. But this is a broader look, right? So we can see cities on I- San Diego County, but probably more importantly, class four cities, this would be statewide. These are cities between two and ten thousand people. Where do we stack up? Tax rates, tax rates were getting better, and a far cry better than we once were. Remember from the other sheet, or the other slide, it wasn't that long ago, we were eighty-five percent. You know, and we're, and we're considerably lower than this now, this is all a little bit behind. And taxes per capita is also a really good one to be looking at. When we look at, when we look at class four cities statewide, taxes per capita, twenty nineteen, five seventy-four, we're sitting, we were sitting at four sixty-five. And we've marched that down per capita, got a little bit of a rise there in twenty twenty-two, but we've, we've, we've done reasonably well, right? The, at the very least, the trend line against the people that we are competing directly against, most directly anyway, other class four cities, we are doing better. And I would always advise against looking at one particular city and trying to compare, especially when you talk about utility rates and things like that, because we don't necessarily know if they're doing any of the stuff that they need to do to take care of their infrastructure and their capital needs. Anybody can make their tax rate look good for a year, anybody can make their utility rates look good for a year if they're willing to kick the can down the road and pretend that there's no problems, right? And quite candidly, we're seeing some of that in Bram, Bram right now. We're gonna see that on the next slide as well. Bram's tax rate going up to a hundred and fourteen percent, that did not, that was not a mistake last year. There's zero chance that was a mistake last year. That was a mistake for twenty or thirty years consecutively. So when you're looking at one city in particular, one city, one point in time, you really do not know if they're doing the things that we need to do. But when I look at it as a group against all class four cities, I know at least some of them are doing some things right. And I know that we are covering our capital, our capital needs, whether it's maintenance and replacement of equipment or capital projects. So if our trend line is in the correct direction, and I know that we're doing the things that we need to do to cover those capital needs, I feel good about that. I don't think that they can keep up a trend line against us on that. Most of those cities are not doing the things that they need to do capital-wise to maintain a good trajectory. It's just how it is.
I have a question on this slide, so two thousand to ten thousand population, have you happened to compare us with the over ten thousand population? Because I know we're, we're gonna, we're expected to grow past that. I mean, I, it'd be interesting to see if we're on the right trajectory in that class of cities as well.
We could, we could certainly pull that. This is, this is one of the slides that the, my auditors put together each year annually. That's part of their, their presentation they do every year, so I've simply borrowed on this one. But yeah, we could.
It'd be interesting to see if we're way far off, because I mean, in five or ten years, we might be in the next class.
Actually, we, let's actually go to the next slide, 'cause the next slide, that does answer some of that.
Real quick question on that last one. So when they're looking at per capita, are they talking adults over eighteen, or are they talking total population, you know, everybody or?
Population, as you would count by the census.
Okay.
Yep. And then, I update the numbers annually for them based on the state demographers' projections. They usually come out between, usually April or July. So that's why you see the, we're a little bit behind, but I give them a projection. I still run it out ahead of time, just 'cause that's how I am, but. Yeah, that's, that's everybody, that's not just, you know, adults that pay taxes or something like that, it's population. So this is an updated version of what I showed in December. Each December now, we've gotten into this now for three consecutive years, where we put this up, we, as I say, is, we are competing against other cities, whether we like it or not, and we need to attract and retain residents with a shrinking labor, labor market over the last few years. There we go, now I can see it, okay. Yeah, as the labor market shrinks, this is not the kind of economy that was in the nineteen seventies. In nineteen seventies, you could just build an industrial park, put in the utilities, and the second you were done, you could fill it up. It was easy, it was, I mean, it was easy, but that's not how that works anymore. The labor force, you know, you, years, you know, decades ago, you could add, you know, forty or forty-nine thousand just in the state of Minnesota. The labor force, we're down to a point where we had seven thousand. Like, it's just not, the trend line is pretty clear, and it's been that way for a long time. And Luke Greiner, who was here the other week, I've been listening to him at my government finance officer meetings annually in Alexandria. I've been listening to him for almost ten years. He has been talking about this for ten years, and the stuff he said ten years ago is absolutely what is happening now. It just, it just is. So, put this up in December each year. There we go. Put this up in December each year. There's no, there's no magic to how I pick these, right? This is basically geography. Put the county on the side and city. How we have this arranged now is based on twenty twenty-three tax rate, right? Largest down here Bram to smallest here in Otsego. And what we're looking at for net change is from the first to the last. And what I want everybody to take very careful note of is that in twenty seventeen, we had an eighty-five, almost eighty-six percent tax rate. And twenty twenty-three, our certified rate is now fifty-two. Back, back in twenty, twenty sixteen, we had an annexation. And the agreement at the time was, is that we would cap the, that residence taxes at, at sixty, at sixty-one percent. And that we would refund them the amount over that. And at the time, that seemed like it was probably a pretty good deal. By the time it was all said and done, the last couple of years, I didn't even actually send them any money, because our tax rate was lower than the threshold anyway. They didn't actually, they weren't do any refund. I don't think when they negotiated that, they expected that to happen in a million years. But, so basically, over a six-year period, we have outclassed everybody else on this list with a reduction in the tax rate of nearly thirty-nine percent. Some do it, some have done better than others, but a thirty-nine percent cut in six years is a lot. The cities that you see on that list that are even coming close to that number are most, for the most part, doing that not necessarily through residential growth and market value, but commercial growth. And remember, the commercial growth, the tax classification rate is times two. So from a perspective of collecting tax dollars after the fact, you get double your money, so to speak. Tax classification rates are set by the state, that's not something we do, but it certainly plays a role. You know, looking at after, after us, you got East Bethel and North Branch. And, yeah, they're not, they're not doing, they're not adding to their market value and forcing their tax rate down by building lots of homes. Those two, those two are doing a lot of commercial stuff. North Branch is building some homes too, but, you know, they've, they've got a considerably larger commercial mix. If I identify, if I could identify one weak point for the city of I- San Diego, there are a lot of good things about our financial future and our financial position. But if I was gonna identify one weak point, it would probably be the mix between commercial and residential market values. We're probably a little heavier on residential than maybe would be nice. But just as I say that, we'll see how it happens over the next twelve months. We might be super excited that we don't have more commercial tax base, so, but.
But if we look at East Bethel, Lionel Lake, Zimmerman, North Branch, well, take North Branch out of the occasion. Their rates were staying in the thirties, down to twenty-nine, it looks like, for Otsego and then East Bethel. They, they kept their rates low through that whole period. I know we started at eighty-five, we're down to fifty-two. What are they doing different? They have a different tax base, or, I mean, they were able to keep level, pretty level. In the threes, fours, thirty-seven, forties.
Their average tax home market value is probably higher than it is here, their market value average.
What, were these numbers still left over from the housing crash? Because I know I- San Diego was hit harder than almost any city around. I mean, we had the highest number of foreclosures almost in the state for a city.
Really, you look at the whole county, I mean, I- San Diego, Cambridge, and Bram were all higher in twenty seventeen.
Right.
Than everywhere else, yeah.
Just seemed like they kept their tax rates more level and down in the twenties and thirties or forties and.
Some of this is structural, right? Otsego is far and away the best example. Otsego is actually huge, it's about forty-nine square miles. It is enormous. To their benefit, while they provide water and sewer service, there are huge swaths of that forty-nine square miles that they do not provide water sewer service to. They also don't provide police service, right? County handles that, they pay right county, they're comfortable with that arrangement, but they also lack control over their police department, right? Because the county's in charge of it. So if they don't like the patrols, you know, they may very well be, may very well be making the calculation that, well, I would like more patrols, but I also like not paying as much, you know?
Okay.
That's the thing. Also, Otsego is very unique in its market value, has a mix between residential and commercial. What people don't realize is the outlet mall in St. Michael Albertville is actually in Otsego, which is kind of crazy, but sure enough. And then you go all the way back to the far northeast corner, and you got the Target, Coburn's immediately south of Elk River. And, and big box stores like that and large retail centers like that had a really, really significant amount of tax base, because it's not just the market value that they bring, but it's the fact that it's times two. That makes a big difference. The other, I would leave you with just some other bits of information, and as I've been talking here, I've been thinking about how to say this. I would say this, I started in June of twenty seventeen, and after working on for two years, I rolled out a capital improvement plan for, that ran out twenty years. And I run that cash flow out twenty, or another twenty years to forty years. And once upon a time, I was asked, hey, if we wanna lower the tax rate for the twenty nineteen budget, how far can we lower that and still maintain that level? I did my off-the-back-of-the-napkin math, and I happen to be very good at that.
And you gotta, gotta think.
That's what I will say. It's the truth, right?
Are we looking at a scenario in the future where we can compete with the, some of these other cities in, in the tax rates in the thirties and forties?
Yeah.
And that is in the twenty thirty and after is what your plan is?
I think there are two points in time that will get us there. One is paying off liquor store debt. And the other is getting all of our debt taken care of. Right, so levy debt falls off entirely. We are levy debt free, and I wanna say it's September. I think I figured out, it was September of twenty thirty, we can have an open house, say we have no debt that is reliant on taxes. That'll be a big deal, 'cause once we get that tax abatement bond for the IIA off the books, that's an automatic drop in the levy of about two hundred, was it, two hundred and fourteen, something like that, thousand, that's a big drop. And once the debt for the liquor store is done, and you can start transferring that two fifty plus some extra, like those, that, I mean, we're talking five hundred thousand dollars of extra that can come to the general fund that doesn't need to be levied anymore. Just the, just the trends outside of that would lead us toward forty percent by twenty thirty. But if you can pick up another three hundred thousand on top of that from the liquor store, yeah, yeah, I think we can.
Okay.
I absolutely think we can. I, I, it's gonna take, it's a concerted multi-year effort, you know? It's never forget that, you know, two things you initially never forget is, one, when you set a levy, you're asking real people to pay real dollars. And two, every budget you set affects every future budget. Don't, I mean, you just cannot forget those things, and it's, you know, don't stare at the tree so long you forget there's a forest, but, yeah, this is fantastic progress. I mean, a nearly forty percent decrease in the tax rate has, has moved us into an entirely different realm. I think there are some other cities that can remain nameless that would like to catch up to us. And I don't think they're doing the things that they need to do to be able to sustain what they're doing. But I can demonstrably prove that what we've done is sustainable, that we are actually funding the things that we need to actually fund, and that the answers that we've put forth in the last handful of years are correct. When we set a street levy at, you know, four hundred and two thousand the other year, like, I can prove that's the correct answer. There's a reason that that's the right answer, and there's a reason that's the levy number.
But there's still room to cut, or to, to become a little more competitive. We're still the fourth highest on the list as far as tax rate, which, it's good progress, but it doesn't say, it doesn't mean we have to be done.
No, and this is why this, this is why I put this slide up at the end of every year at the, at the budget meeting. It's always the last slide I end on, is, is, it is a long game, it's a multi-decade approach, and it is hard to get, to keep that thing going. And I had a council member, Jimmy probably remembers who this was, I had a council member ask me once upon a time, and it said, hey, this is a really great plan, but councils change over. How do you keep a plan like that going for decades at a time, when twenty years from now, none of the people that are on council now are gonna be able to, are gonna be here? How do you keep that going? But putting this stuff up on the screen, making it available online, making sure that people actually have these documents, they actually have a twenty-year capital improvement plan in their hand, making sure they actually have these things in their hands, so that someday when a council wants to say, you know what? Nuts to all this, let's issue some debt and run the tax rate down to zero. Well, somebody's gonna pay a price on the other end of that. And there needs to be some residents in, in the, in the audience that can raise their hand and say, hey, we had a good plan, we followed it for a lot of years, why aren't we doing that still? And it's that transparency that, that, that helps to keep that thing going.
I'd like to see the city communicate better to taxation, maybe through our Facebook page. I was gonna ask you, Mike, if maybe you could write up something this fall and explain taxes in, in simple terms to everybody, because a lot of residents don't get it, and I think that'll, that'll help a little bit.
Yeah, so I continue to revise my presentations. I mean, if you go back and look at past ones, you can see every year, I've kinda tweaked it a little bit. I put something in the newsletter every year, but I think I can do considerably better. The one I put in the newsletter is basically just, here's the calendar, you know? Here's the sequence of events, which is helpful, but I don't know that provides great insight, you know? I know Bill and I have talked in the past, after this last budget cycle, he came to me and said, hey, this last budget presentation was the best one I've ever seen. I think it made more sense for more people than any budget presentation I've seen a finance director give. Hey, do you wanna do an interview next year, come tax time? That'd be another great opportunity for me to get some, some of this basic info out that, unless you've got a competent finance director explaining it, you sure as heck are not gonna get it from, you know, K eleven or WCCO or whatever. Like, they're, they're gonna tell you about the levy, and they're not even gonna know that what they told you didn't actually help.
Are we posting this online, and also are we posting the audit online? 'Cause I'd, I'd like to see them both.
Yep, audit is online and the budget's online. I'd have to double-check if I've been putting the budget presentation online. We could start doing that, so that these types of.
If this is part of the packet, when it creates a part of the packet, it's online, you just have to go to the packet of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's true too. Yeah, we're now at that point digitally where anything I ever present now going forward is on YouTube video, but also digitally, this is on, this is online, you know, on, on our website. So this is, which even just in twenty eighteen, nineteen, wasn't the case, you know? So it was easy, you know, it was kinda one of those things, if you wanna come learn about the budget, you come to this meeting, you watch it, and then after that, that's it. You, you were never gonna see it again. Two weeks later, if you forgot something, you were like, that's it.
Make a social media post about the budget session today and links? Because people, unless they're actually looking for it, aren't gonna see it unless they go onto the site, find the agenda and then.
When we post the agenda on Facebook, we usually have been putting a link to where to find the full packet. That's where all this is, is in the packet, and then we are streaming this live, but.
Thanks, I haven't looked at the Facebook page this week at all, so. Thanks, I haven't looked at the Facebook page this week at all, so.
Yeah, the posts have been good on Facebook, by the way. I, I like seeing them, they're pretty consistent and, yeah.
Yeah, we can, and we can do a lot of this stuff, I think. I know, I mean, a lot of people are on Facebook or social media because they want small snippets.
Right.
But a lot of this stuff, it's, you know, yeah, you kind of gotta watch it for, you know, twenty minutes or an hour. And, you know, but for the people that really want to have some genuine understanding of this stuff, I mean, you know, all the stuff that I'm talking about, you know, this is an aggregation of knowledge of ideas and, and concepts bouncing around in my mind for more than a decade. You know, it didn't, it didn't happen overnight, it's not, I mean, it's just how it is. And I don't expect average residents to spend that kind of time. They shouldn't, right? I mean, free market economy, everybody should specialize in. I don't expect residents to specialize in municipal finance, but that doesn't mean they can't, you know, watch, maybe watch this and get a, a basic understanding.
I was telling Mike, I, I told and talked to him and asked him questions for like an hour or so today and I said, you know, I finally feel after being on the council for the time I've been on and now finally doing this and you know, it's almost like getting behind the wheel of a big, you know, tractor or something like that or a big backhoor, you know, where I have no idea kind of walking into it and there's lever here and a lever here and different ways that you can move things around and shift things and, you know, different approaches that you can take and you know, it's, it, it's pretty complex stuff, you know, I mean, there's a lot to it and it's, it takes a while to get a, a accustomed to where you're at and what you're doing and it's, it's, I've enjoyed it, I mean, it's, Mike has been really helpful on just educating me and, and always willing to answer questions, so I'm really, and, and he'll do that for anybody, you know, anybody that's watching right now or in, in the audience, I mean, it's, he's more than happy to talk about it.
And to clarify, I mean, this isn't, what you've just said is not exclusive to council. I mean, if there are residents that want to come in and understand, yeah, I'm all for it. I mean, I, they might, I mean, they might really want out of my office after a couple hours, but, I mean, I will absolutely give them all that time, for sure.
I think the biggest thing is kind of public perception, like you're saying, like the, the public wants to feel like we're making the best monetary decisions for them and that's, I mean, the numbers are all great, but the city's residents see the decisions we make, say, the splash pad, that's, that's, that's an extra cost that they're gonna have to pay for, they see these things more so than the numbers. So, I mean, it's, it's hard to understand the numbers, but what they do understand is actually seeing their money being spent in the community and whether they agree with it or not, that's, you know, the numbers are difficult, but.
It is.
They see our decisions.
Absolutely. Um, all right, so this was, you know, we kind of, we were talking about tax rate and this was kind of the end of, you know, right? We talked a lot about tax rate and why we wanted steady declining tax rate and, and, you know, how we compare. Levy debt free by twenty thirty. And we touched on this on an earlier slide, general obligation bonds costs about one-third the amount borrowed in interest. So, and, and the math is super straightforward, whether it's one million, two million, three million forward, it's a third. Um, and I brought this up before because I couldn't contain myself, you buy three pi, buy three projects, get the fourth free. Uh, most people would, I mean, let's face it, most people would buy four boxes of cereal if that was the deal. I mean, you know, so we, we should certainly do that on a road project.
So I, I do have a question about, you know, debt, because the liquor stores are a large debt we have. Was that just not properly planned for? Or how was, was that not budgeted for? I mean, we, we had to have known that our liquor store needed to expand for at least ten or fifteen years, right? I mean, I just hate to see debt.
So I could tell you my role in that. Um, I will absolutely take credit or blame for that. It was my idea to move out of that location, it was my idea to sell, um, the fire department, or the PD to the fire department. It was my idea to move PD, it was my idea to find a new location for the liquor store. Prior to me even getting here, that idea of moving the liquor store to the east side of sixty-five had been floated multiple times and always went nowhere. Absolutely nowhere. The, what I noticed right away when I got here was the liquor store did an incredible job making a whole lot of money. And it was particularly impressive based on square footage. John and I used to talk and neither of us could ever articulate or find an example of another store that made more money per square foot than that one. So that's great, except my mind immediately thinks if I'm already the best at that, I probably don't have a lot of room to grow. I probably don't have anywhere else to go. Now, to the extent that we would say, well, I want to, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna save the money and, and I'm gonna just pay cash. I did run the numbers on that. I thought the most rosy, the most favorable projections I could come up with was we would have to save money for twenty years from, you know, roughly, well, I suppose I hatched that scheme in like twenty nineteen, but we'd have to save minimum twenty years, I thought the more likely scenario was we'd have to save for thirty years. In part, because we were probably close to the best we could do at that store and it couldn't necessarily move too many more people through that store. But also then as I save, the cost of building, it goes up and up and up. And so eventually it became clear in my mind that I can borrow the money, pay the interest and still come out farther ahead at the end of twenty or thirty years than if I just sat and saved. And to the extent that it wasn't dependent on taxes, I was comfortable with that.
And what's the interest rate on that, the liquor store? I mean, it might even be less than inflation now.
It is, for sure. I was gonna say not more than three point one two five. I don't think it's more than that, it might, it's probably about that, because you generally pay a little bit of a premium on revenue bonds over general obligation bonds. Uh, because revenue bonds are, do not have, um, a full faith guarantee. I mean, technically, we could walk away, it'd be a terrible decision, but we could. Uh, general obligation, general obligation bonds, you can't do that. If you don't, if you don't pay, um, the state will step in and you'll pay.
It's kind of a unique scenario too, because typically you don't have a, a, a government entity doing a business, you know? So, I mean, you're, you're not, I mean, if you were in business for yourself and you'd say, well, we really need to expand, we need a bigger store, I mean, you'd probably be more comfortable taking out a loan because you're gonna say, well, I'm gonna do more sales, I'm gonna grow and I'm gonna be able to cover that loan, plus I'm gonna be able to make more money, right? But as a, as a government, you think, well, we don't want our, our city to take out more debt, well, the city is taking it out, but in reality, it's the liquor store that's taking it out, it's the business that's taking it out, you know, and so.
Well, and we did, we did a market study, right? You hire a firm and pay them the ten or thirteen or whatever thousand bucks it was and they say, all right, look, we got all these different aggregated and individualized, uh, revenue numbers from these different stores and here's how we think the market trends are, blah, 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 blah. And they basically said at the time we commissioned that, we had a twenty eighteen year complete and we had about three million dollars in total revenue. Um, and they said, hey, if you moved across, um, the highway in any one of these sites that they had identified for us and said, you know, a sample ones, right? Where, we didn't already have a building and things like that, right? Uh, they said, hey, I bet that by the end of your third full year, we think you can be at four and a half million. We were, we're over five million in our first full year. I mean, and I was comfortable going forward with that because even when I suggest, even when I assumed that that was going to be the outcome, four and a half million at the end of three years, even if I considered the worst case scenario on expenses, it still worked out. And so it's like, all right, if my worst case scenario says this can be, this can still float and I can cover the debt, even if I have to cover the debt for the full fifteen years, I'm still better than the alternative of twenty or thirty years out, so.
I originally thought the same, I mean, I thought, I don't wanna take out debt and I don't, and I went and looked at the store, I mean, you couldn't look at the store and you, when you walked in the back room, I mean, you had to walk sideways to get through pallets of beer and I mean, it was, you had to have a new store, you know?
And, and, and this is, this is the other thing too, and I don't want, I don't want the council or any other residents or business owners for that matter to, to miss this point. The beauty of that store is not just its location in the site plan, which I'm super, super proud of, by the way. What's great about it is when we, when we had high square footage sales at our old store, it is safe to say that there was no surplus or no excess demand for alcohol in Isani. Everybody was already drinking all of the alcohol they cared to drink. To the extent that we can go across the highway and grow by twenty-five percent in the first year and, and track for about eight to ten in the second year, that's not Isani residents paying that. Those are people driving north on sixty-five who don't live here, who are gonna pay that bill for me. That's, 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 that's like my favorite kind of money. I like that kind.
I don't remember the first year I did that as a goal, as an immobilco store for the east side. Every year I got shut down.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding was it got talked about several times over many years and never got anywhere.
Never got anywhere.
Yep. So, I'm glad that it's worked out and I think that it's gonna be a really great thing for, for Isani for a lot of years. I think that's the, uh, on Northbound sixty-five, there is no doubt that's the easiest liquor store to stop at, especially if you've got an RV or a, or an ice castle or whatever.
Do you know how much is left on that, the bond for that to pay it off roughly?
Um, so, let's see, we would have issued the bonds in twenty. Also, we have, we've paid all basically one year. Um, and so we would have paid, most of the first payment would be interest, so we've maybe paid down a hundred thousand dollars of, of principal at this point.
And how much was the total?
Uh, I think the total issue was three point one, three point two.
Okay.
I have to double check, but something in that, something in that range. Um, but this is an honest to God debt service calculator, you can actually use this to kind of figure out what's going on. Um, this is the other part I don't even talk about. If I issue, um, million dollars, four percent, fifteen years, four percent is the generally correct right now, it's probably a little bit higher at this point, but the other thing I don't talk about here is, is not just that, uh, the interest based on whether you have a level debt service or you have level principal, but, you know, you're talking roughly a third. It's also not cheap to issue it. You gotta pay a lot of lawyers and consultants, kind of a lot of money. And, uh, make no mistake, if, if, if your bond issue is, um, a million dollars and they want eighteen thousand, they are not gonna ask for eighteen thousand if you issue two million. They are gonna charge you more. Um, so going debt free, um, it's just a careful detailed planning. And like I said before, any city could do this, I kind of jumped the gun before. We, by the time I looked at this, it was clear we were not more, only slightly more than ten years away from being able to achieve that goal and there was a clear path um, to be able to get there. But other cities, um, like Granite Falls, uh, where they're heavily in debt, yeah, I could get Granite Falls out of debt too, but I think I would need eighty years. But I could get it, I could get her done, but that's how it is. Also, it's un, un, understand, um, favoring other goals like a declining tax rate can introduce risk. Um, there's gotta always be this balance and based on economic cycles, where are people at, where is unemployment, where our market value's at, where is our budget at? What are our current capital needs? You know, you gotta kind of tweak that mix. But, um, I always understand, there's, there's, there's no, there's no free lunch. If you, if you push too hard on this one, you're giving up something over here, that's just how that works. Um, and to remember, and we've touched on this a few times, Rome was not built in a day, it takes a lot of years of sustained commitment to execute a debt-free plan. This is a, this is a fun one. So, okay, we're gonna go levy debt free, so that's super cool. But like, is that, how many people do that? Like, how rare is that? This is a list of the largest cities in the state that as of twenty, year-end twenty twenty were levy debt free. Um, I did not go back and double check if any of them had issued debt since then. Some of them could have issued in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. Um, this is from state auditor stuff, this, this is what they have self-reported to the state, um, independently of perjury, so. They should all be correct, but this would be an absolute opportunity. Unless, uh, unless Oak Grove or Crookston or International Falls are absolutely hell-bent on staying levy debt free. There's a real possibility by the time we get to twenty thirty, if we stay on path, we could be absolutely the largest city in the state that is levy debt free. My, I, I think that is a part of being the financial envy of every other city in the state. Um, and I think that's a super fun goal to be a part of. So, but this is information that's available, but if anybody wants the full list, I can, I can provide that. Most of the, most of the cities that are debt-free are under a thousand and it's, well, that's an interesting point too. Just a side note, most of the cities that are debt-free are under a thousand, are doing it on purpose. And they're doing it on purpose for a reason you wouldn't think. They don't want a levy for capital needs because they know if they wait, they'll get the state and or federal government to subsidize a huge portion of it. So, that's how that works when you're under a thousand.
And the reason it's so important to be debt-free is because you're not paying interest, basically, correct?
It's huge, buy three, get one free. Why not? Um, this is a, just an excerpt from Fund Balance Policy. Basically says is, um, you know, when we have excess, um, of seventy percent in the general fund, um, we're gonna use that to reduce the tax rate in subsequent budget years. I would give this, I would give this pause though, just in case we get to that point sooner than I think. By the time we get to a day where we have our auditors coming presenting their final year-end report, if that number says anything over sixty, um, I'm going to start talking to you about hitting the brakes. Simply because you're going to find out about it after the fact and if we wait till we actually get to seventy, by the time we take corrective action, we will have zoomed right past it. And so we ought to just start having a plan, by the time we get to sixty, we ought to start having a plan as to how to ratchet that back so we don't just go straight clear over seventy percent, which would not be the worst problem we've ever had, but it's also not ideal. And then of course, the other side of that is, um, we wanna try to keep at least thirty percent and to the extent that we don't, we always want to make sure we've got a plan, that council understands that there's gotta be a plan to get, get us, get us back up there. And we talked about this, right? Fund balance equals insurance, um, you mitigate risk of issuing levy debt dependent, levy dependent debt, um, and you really mitigate risk of material increases and decreases in the tax rate, right? That's my way of saying that fund balance is a great way to help make sure that you keep a steady tax rate that isn't going up double digits or down double digits and that we continue to make that steady progress and that steady commitment year after year after year. Also, and we've touched on this, mitigate the effects of precipitous drop in overall market value, right? This is that economic downturn, people are feeling real pain and they genuinely need real relief and we have to have already planned for that. That planning had to have occurred years before they need that relief. You can't, can't decide it at the last moment, that, that work has to have already been done. And we'll see that today, you know, about half an hour when Justin is here, he'll, will present, uh, on behalf of ABDO. And, uh, fun, fun balance at the end of the year was, uh, forty-two percent. So, yeah, summary, that's the goals. What I need to know at this point, um, unless there are questions, I should maybe hold up if there are any questions or comments or.
I think you've answered all mine so far.
So, biggest thing is, do we need to add? Do we like these three goals? Keep an eye on the tax rate, um, go on levy debt free and socking away rainy day money? Is that the three primary goals? And if we're, it seems like we're not in our heads, um, do we need to have other goals? Is there something else that I need to know about in order to start putting this together?
The rainy day money, are you investing?
Yes.
I, I would like, I would like
So.
From here on forward, not to invest any money that would be tied up more than one year.
So I didn't.
I know we had a little discussion about that and I was looking at it and I was.
So, what I didn't, what I didn't get into with you, because I suspected it was gonna come up here and I was like, wow, this is better for the whole council to hear. And we don't need to make this, uh, we don't need to tell the whole world about this, but to the best of my knowledge, we are one of two cities in this, in the entire country that have our on-demand deposits for checking and savings tied to the Wall Street Journal prime rate. Right, so you had sent a link saying, hey, we can get, um, four point seven percent on thirty-day CD. I'm getting four point six already on my on-demand deposits.
I see.
The only reason.
Fine, that's, that's good.
And, and, and I did this years ago when I was in Granite Falls because I was sitting there watching interest rates climb or at the very least fluctuate and my bank never did anything. At that time, I was sitting at point one five percent. And I knew, I knew better, like, I knew I wasn't getting, and so I kind of started hatching this game and trying to find other examples of cities, couldn't find anybody. Uh, I found one out in Washington that had something that was sort of close, but it wasn't really like enforceable. So I went to one bank in town, a friend of mine was the vice president, I said, here's what I'm trying to do, but I don't know what the rate should be. I want you guys to peg to a rate, but I don't know how to decide what that rate is that should be universal across all institutions. And he suggested, he said, well, use the Wall Street Journal prime rate, that's how we are setting all of our loans. So I went out and bid that again. Said, all right, both two banks in Granite Falls, you guys are gonna bid this and you're gonna peg to the Wall Street Journal prime rate, you're gonna identify the floor and you're gonna identify the discount and when that, when that Wall Street Journal prime rate goes up, my rate is gonna go up with it. Well, overnight, I went from getting point one five to getting point four five, I got three times my interest. We've also done that here, because of course, why not, right? Now, we do still invest in about roughly a third of assets in CDs. And, well, actually, and some munis now too.
So only about a third of it is?
Yeah.
Okay, I wonder.
The other, the other, the reason to do that is, is in an attempt to take some of the highs and the lows out of the equation and move the total return more toward the trend line in the middle. Right, so when interest rates were really low and you saw on the spreadsheet, some of those are paying one point nine five. Right, so when interest rates were really low, and you saw on the spreadsheet, some of those are paying one point nine five. Yeah, that's, nah, that sucks, but at the time, that wasn't too bad. But now on the flip side goes around, now interest rates are high, now I'm getting CDs at five point one. Well, a five point one CD in five years is probably going to be an exceptional rate, by then, rates will probably have come back down, right? So this is sort of the mitigate, I, I don't want the, I don't want the, I don't want the super highs and I don't want the super lows, I want something that is consistent and reliable, and I don't wanna have to, I don't wanna be subject to interest rate risk in a big way.
Can, can the city have an Ameritrade account?
We could, but I suspect that my brokerage account with Oppenheimer and RBC probably could meet those needs.
Okay, well, because I've been noticing rates on a monthly basis, a one-year CD and a five-year CD not being that much different, and I'd rather stay in a shorter term period from here on in than to have, you know, a couple million dollars at one percent, because we went longer term, so it'd be nicer to shorten that term up.
There's, there are even some banks right now offering a, a savings account with a five point two one percent annual yield, on a savings account with no commitment guaranteed for the first year. So if you put, I mean, I was gonna do this with my own money, if you put your own money in the bank at a five point two, five point one two percent APY, that's huge, you can, you can make huge money. But the only thing is, we'd have to weigh out the cost of pulling these out of the CDs and the penalties.
Your penalties would be too much, but four six, you said you're getting four six right now on checking and checking and savings?
Check, checking and savings equal.
Yeah, that, that's fair.
Yeah, and if, and if, as the Wall Street Journal rate climbs, that rate automatically climbs. I gotta, I'm at, what is my discount, three point four, I think, I have to double check, but I think I have three point four percent discount below.
Maybe we can have a discussion later about just keeping the money in the bank instead of investing in CDs unless they're short-term at a future date.
That's really been, I have never even really thought about that, you know, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, it's a good.
It adds up.
I'd like to listen to the expert on all that, and that's him.
Yep.
I'm not gonna sit up here and tell him how to invest our money.
Yeah, the, I, I understand what you're saying, and it is, it is absolutely tempting, no doubt. And there are times where you're going to look at your ladder CDs and say, mm, god dang it, I wish I hadn't put that much in at that rate. But at the flip side, you're also equally likely to find instances where you look at what you're getting and go, oh, I should have put twice as much in at that rate, gosh dang it. And again, the goal is over the long term, to take the highest highs out and the lowest lows out. Investing the residents' money is really about being consistent and prudent and conservative and not, not trying to swing for the fences too hard. But to the extent that we have a local institution willing to give us a really great interest rate. Yeah, I mean, my, my brokerage accounts, they both call regularly asking for more money, and I'm like, I don't think it really matters, because I'm doing pretty well.
My only point was, well, we know why the Silicon Valley Bank went down, it's because it bought a whole bunch of CDs at one percent, and the rates went up to five percent, they needed the money, they couldn't sell them without a huge loss. We're not even close to that position. But that is what made me look at it and just say, there's no reason why we can't take, instead of having, looks like maybe a couple million dollars tied up at the one and two percent range, that if we would have went with a little, just a shorter term rate, we wouldn't have lost that much of a rate, you know what I mean? You might have got one point two percent instead of one three if you would have went a shorter term, I just.
No, I, I understand that, and, but this is, this is the point of, to the extent that you're gonna ladder a certain amount of money, you want to have those timelines maturing equally over roughly a five-year period. Right, this mitigates the upward and downward, right, so it's not just where you say, well, I could have done a little better, but at the time, the one point nine was good. That was a solid rate at the time, but on the flip side, now, when we come back around and those interest rates start to drop, now, there's a portion, a ladder, a portion of that ladder in our portfolio that's gonna look really delicious, and we're gonna think, god dang it, I should have put more in there. But in the end, it's not about trying to make sure that we are getting the absolute top dollar in every scenario, every time. It's, let's keep up, but let's be prudent. There are securities that we could be investing in that are riskier and would pay more, and I don't think that we should do it. Also, remember is, a lot of this is dictated by state statute, right? There's a, there's a finite limit on what I can invest in. Additionally, any CDs we buy have to be FDIC insured, so once you buy two hundred fifty at one bank, that's it, there is no more. Additionally, the bank, the deposits we have on our local bank, which far exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, have to be, have pledged collateral behind them. So each month, I get a list, they prove that the market value exceeds our total, total deposits, and I know exactly which securities, most of them, most of them, they're using muni bonds, and a lot of them happen to be with school districts, but they have an actual market value that exceeds the value of my deposits at the bank. And that's, again, that's obligatory, that is part of the banking services agreement, and they're required by the banking services agreement and state statute to meet those obligations.
Yeah, I was happy to see this list, I think it's, it's interesting, you know, there's a, there's a term in economics and psychology called the rule of thirty, and the fact that we almost have thirty CDs diversified in different, different ways keeps us safe financially. That's a big thing with the, the stock market, any sort of money is diversifying, so I, I think you're doing a good job. It's, I, it's, it's cool to see the, the maturity dates on all these, and I guess I like how it's, seems nicely spread, so if we need money, we have it accessible within a reasonable amount of time.
And that's, that's one of the biggest benefits actually of the banking services agreement we have, which I guess I'd really would rather not have other cities be doing, but I think that's a good competitive advantage. Other cities, so like, so for example, once upon a time, I knew the finance director in Maple Grove, and he's now retired, but they would do extensive cash flow analysis, right? Look back multiple years, look forward multiple years, incorporate future projects, the specific cash flows on those specific projects. Well, I mean, I got to, I mean, there comes a point where it's like, you pretty much have to be Maple Grove in order to do that, to be able to run on-demand deposits as lean as possible while laddering all your CDs. I mean, if I, if, if I was going to be in that situation here right now, and I didn't have this favorable banking service agreement, I would probably need another full-time staff just to be able to pull that off. I mean, just, the analysis is really complex, and you can't be wrong. Like, you, it's not, well, you gotta be right most of the time, you have to be correct a hundred percent of the time. Otherwise, that might mean you didn't make your debt service payment, you didn't make payroll, whatever it is. But it's, larger cities like Maple Grove, and they have twenty-two people in their finance department, you know, they can have one person, this is the thing you do. You're gonna run this cash flow analysis over and over and over and over and over and over and over. We don't have that luxury, and fortunately, we got a good agreement, we don't necessarily need to, so.
My, my only point was, just with the certainty of the markets and everything right now, if, if we are to put in more cash, if we can keep it shorter term, that, that was my only.
At this point, at this point, on that schedule, the only cash that re-ups is as it matures. That cash just stays there, the, the money that's at Falcon National stays at Falcon National.
Okay.
I don't, I, I don't, to my mind, I don't really want more than about a third, roughly, of our, of our, of our cash in the CDs and munis. Given the situation that we have on on-demand deposits, yeah. I mean, because if we're really gonna go the other way, have a terrible agreement there, not be able to collect good interest, and need to be, and feel compelled to invest all of it, or as much as we could, and meet cash flow, like I said, I either have to not do something else, or I need another staff, and that ends up being a losing situation, you know? This is, this works out real, this works out well for us.
I have another question for you, so do you have a, a worst-case scenario plan for if or when the financial system crashes? Do you have any sort of plan for that in, in your mind, or?
If, yeah, if, if the, if the, if the entire financial market crashes.
What does the city do then, what do we as council, I mean, just like doomsday, like, how do we prepare for something like that? Do we need to stock up on city supplies, or, I mean?
I brought that up early, remember, remember in January at the goal setting, I brought that up, and everybody was, everybody was terrified.
It could ha, I mean, it could happen.
Well, I, I would say this, is you, you would always want to be, you would always want to, remember, there's no free lunch, right? So you would always want this to be that teeter totter of, you can, if you, if you prep for that type of scenario too much, right? You try to mitigate too much risk in your investing, and you try to accumulate too many supplies, right? It could just be, I'm gonna buy a absolute ton of diesel fuel, right?
Right.
Thing is, to the extent that you do that, there is a cost on the other side that is borne by residents now, that may never benefit from that preparation. Maybe they would, but they may not. And to the extent that they may not agree with that, that's the consideration, but, I mean, to the, you know, that's part of the deal. You know, like, when we put in the emergency generators for lift station, or lift stations, that was part of the calculus, right? Now, we were thinking more about natural disaster and losing power, but that was also why we chose diesel rather than natural gas, because I can get diesel here manually. If I need to physically haul it in, I, that's considerably harder with natural gas, so the same kind of thing with that. We've talked about that at the PD station, if you don't know, they have a concrete containment bin in the back with a fuel pump. Now, right now, that's not operational, and right now, it's not on the schedule, but we'll, that, we'll probably get on to the capital improvement plan. It may not be a priority in year one or four or whatever, but someday, yeah, that's super nice. If you're gonna have a severe natural disaster, and you're gonna have limited resources, you're gonna have a limited ability to gain fuel for the PD, to have their own fuel set aside, that, there's, there's probably some value in that, so.
So, I mean, we have almost all of our monies tied up in the financial market, so, I mean.
Yeah, roughly a third in, in those two brokerage accounts.
In dollar terms, the banks, I mean, it's all in.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, make no mistake, I do not have a large, I do not have a large safe in City Hall filled with cash.
So, what, if something like that were to happen, what would be your first, your first move? Have you thought about that, or is that just not even something that really matters? Or is our first move, or?
We're all in it together at that point. Whole community.
I have lots of, I have lots of answers. However. I think some of the answers would be better in a private conversation, how about that?
Okay, I just wanna try and, if, it'd be nice to be a prayer somehow, if.
Let's say this, I don't think that any economic disaster can ever be as bad as most people would think. So remember during the Great Depression, and this was something I, I learned from Warren Buffett, it says, it was remarkable what he learned, he was, I think he was like eight or something at the time. He says, one thing I remembered from the Great Depression was that even though people did not have a roof over their head, somehow, they always had a penny for a piece of candy. Right, so even in the worst of times, there will always be economic activity. Right, to the, to the extent that people have a finite amount of time on earth, they will always feel an incentive to engage in economic activity. So even when it's really awful, there will still be economic activity, and there will be an incentive to engage in economic activity. After that, so long as you have the redress of grievances and a measure of trust, you can facilitate economic activity even in the worst of times. How about that, that's a little rosier than some of the other thoughts I had, how about that?
Would it, would it be of any benefit to us to have some, like, I know Jimmy brought it up, like a, like a twenty first, say if we had to reduce twenty-five percent, would it be any benefit to have something like that in place for more swift action on your part, or?
I missed the first part of what?
So, um, was that, how much?
Yeah, that's what I, I said, you know, could we, at the goal setting, I had mentioned, you know, can we do just an emergency plan that all the department has to get together and say, okay, what if we had to cut ten percent? What if we had to cut twenty-five, you know, what does that look like, where would you go to, to get that? And, you know, we didn't really follow it through, and I, I think it's more or less because I think if you get to that point, you'll figure it out, you know?
That would be my, if we, if we found ourselves in a situation where the economic environment that we were experiencing necessitated, and clearly, right? We're talking about a Great Depression-type scenario where there's not any doubt, and it necessitates a twenty-five or fifty percent cut. I firmly believe those cuts will be self-evident. I don't think it will be difficult to identify, because there's gonna be a handful of people in, in a, in a severe economic downturn like that, there are gonna be a handful of people that are going to assume they aren't going to get paid. There are going to be a handful of people that are going to assume that their other, you know, their parents need help. You're gonna, you're gonna start to see people move around a lot and make some very different decisions than you would otherwise ordinarily expect them to make in a situation like this right now today. I think that the cuts of that magnitude would be self-evident. And they would be compulsory, and it would be very clear that, well, this is horrible, we don't wanna make these cuts, well, we'll also be able to recognize we don't have a choice. I mean, it would, you, it would, it would be, I mean, for example, as soon as you have a, an economic downturn that severe, nobody's asking when their road is gonna get paved in twenty twenty-seven, nobody, nobody probably cares at all anymore. So suddenly, cutting those out, yeah, it's just not a priority at that moment, and nobody wants you to pay for it. Right now, do people want us to pay for capital projects because they want us to be on a good fiscal footing? Sure, but in a, in a, in a, in a Great Depression scenario, no. Those are, that ends up being an easy cut, nobody cares, so. Any other questions? Do we have any other goals that need to get attached to this? And if you don't have an answer now, that, I mean, you can run things over in your mind too, it's not, it's not a test.
You know, I mean, my, my inclination is always to lean more toward aggressive tax decreases, you know, and, and I, I think that's, that's really where the tough part is, is how do you balance that with the other two? And I think that, I think all three of them are essential to, to getting a good plan put together, because you don't wanna burden the future generations or the next people that sit in these seats. I mean, that's not our goal, I mean, we wanna do what we, what we are best to take care of the people that we're representing today, but at the same time, we've got an obligation to make sure that their kids are, are taken care of down the road too, right? So, so I think that's, that's always something to keep in mind, but, but yeah, and I think, I, from my perspective, these goals are, are the things that we need to really be focusing on, so.
Yeah, and it probably was worth, I probably should have put this in the slide, but the pursuit of all three goals enables all three goals, right? I mean, it's, you know, language-wise, that sounds weird, but pushing toward all three goals makes all three goals attainable. I mean, they are, they work together. At this time, do we have an idea on the budget process? What we've done in the past is budget workshop at the second meeting in July, second budget workshop at the first meeting in August, which remember is actually on a Wednesday for national night out. And then an optional third budget work session at the second meeting in August. That has been, that's, I don't know how many years that, it's been since before I got here, that's how that's been done. If we wanna see something different, or, and we, again, we don't have to even hash that out necessarily today. As long as I understand the goals, and, and we have got a base understanding of this stuff, that's sufficient for me today, but.
How long are those budget meetings usually, like, one to two hours?
Yeah, it's, it's basically whatever we need, but yeah, you, I would say, I don't know that I've ever gone, I don't think I've ever gone over two hours, but I've certainly gone over an hour.
Yeah, and they're usually following the council meeting, so it depends on what time the council meeting is, or council EDA, and then it.
Is there any way, I, I guess I worry about our, the council getting more tired and making budgetary decisions when maybe we're not as fresh as we should be or could be, is there any way to maybe have it on a different day, or do something so that we're not, so we're coming in with fresh ears? You know, because after, you know, two or three hours, I, I feel like it's hard to sort of pay attention, is that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, it's, you know, if that's the tact we wanna go for, we would need to consider the resolution that's in the, on the consent agenda for setting those dates. But we could also set those dates and then figure out, you know? But, you know, just like for this one, mayor can just call a work session, and then we simply post it, and it's a thing. So, you know, if we. Yeah, we do have to provide the notice ahead of time and stuff, but can't be at the last second without emergency situation. But yeah, I mean, that could be up to the council, if you guys are all like, yeah, Wednesdays totally work better, or Thursdays totally work better, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of the things we're gonna, we could pull it off the consent agenda if we want, I think it's on a consent, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, that agenda item doesn't have to be today. Right, that's when we've, we've done it, and we stick kind of that schedule, it's also my cue to hand out the budget timeline, so that's, council understands what's gonna happen, and in what order and when. But if we wanna pull that and consider a different option, and then, you know, set those dates at the next meeting, that would make a darn bit of difference.
What do you think, Dan, I mean, that's.
Tuesdays, early night I'm available, early night I've been available for ten years, so.
I guess. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't mind the long meetings, but it seems like some of us get a little bit less wanting to talk and communicate when it's longer.
A lot of those questions can be done outside the council meeting.
Yeah, so we don't go through line item by line item at those meetings, but it's more the general, what the requests are, how it's been plugged in into the budget, and presented overall. If you wanna touch on that, just a few minutes, but. how it's been plugged in into the budget, and presented overall, if you want to touch on that, just a few minutes, but...
Yeah.
We do have two of those three meetings on a night that has KAO, so it will be a long day.
Yeah, that's...
That's, that's the only other thing I was going to say is, I mean, we could, we could go back and look at the calendar and try to find times where we could set the budget work sessions for five instead of, kind of look at how might that work? Could do first, so we could do first meeting August, first meeting July.
Well, we could talk about it some more at the council meeting, if you guys want to think about that in the meantime.
Yeah, so you guys think about it, if you want to pull that item and, you know, put it out for next time, that's fine.
I want to make sure we have time to do it right, but I mean, we can also kind of schedule our council agendas to remember that we have those meetings and try to not add a whole bunch of new stuff, you know, at that time too, so...
We, I mean, the staff, we can take that direction too, that, hey, if something can wait till the next agenda...
I think I'd rather maybe take that approach, because like Dan said, I mean, my, my life is kind of the same way, it's all revolved around Tuesday nights, right? Yeah, so, you know, if anything gets out of whack, then it's, it's hard to, to make some of those things work, so...
I mean, I prefer it all on Tuesdays too, but it's just that it...
Well, I mean, if we want to bring it out of the consent, we can, but I mean, I mean, I think that'd probably be easier just for staff to say, well, let's make sure we have kind of a little lighter load on these council meeting nights, so we've got time to dig deep into the budget stuff, you know, so...
And Mike's open to talk too, so if we have questions.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and, you know, and that's the other thing too, is, I mean, as we're getting ready for the budget season here, and, and, you know, at least for you two, the first time through, the best thing to start to get ready and prepare for the twenty twenty-four budget is to look at the twenty twenty-three budget. By and large, we're to a point where we've got enough stuff dialed in, there aren't big changes, right? I mean, the capitalist is going to look really similar, well, PD excluded this year because it's entirely a new building, but, and the same with a lot of the operating expenses. Being really familiar with the twenty twenty-three budget will inform, will give you a lot of information for the twenty twenty-four budget, for sure.
One thing Mike told me the other day is, you know, if you look at the twenty seventeen budget, compare it to the twenty twenty-three, and then you can kind of, that was, that was, I thought, a good point too, is you can look back and see, well, where, you know, why did that go up like here? And, you know, and that's, kind of gives you some good things to think about, well, what's, what's the reason for that, you know?
And, and on, on the website, we do have multiple years of audited financials and budgets and things like that too. So, I mean, if you want to say, well, all right, twenty twenty-three budget, that was cool, but what about twenty twenty? We're going to absolutely find it, absolutely, so... Well, yeah, I think, I think that sounds good, unless you guys have anything else?
No, no, good job, Mike, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for putting all that together. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Merrill, and a second from Councilman Heeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero.